All right, it's 6:00 PM. I would like to call this meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you could remain standing. Do we have, yes, Trevor Van Lars here from the Gilroy Presbyterian Church to give the invocation?
Councilmembers, citizens, please join me in a moment of silence and then the invocation. Father in heaven, as we begin this council meeting, I thank you tonight for these your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, and our council members, and give thanks for the way they have chosen to serve us with their own careers and even their personal time. Lord, we come to you tonight to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support. Help our council to engage in meaningful discussion, to nurture our community, and to be excellent in the governance of this city. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as our elected officials make decisions that will affect the citizens and the guests of our city and our home. Even though we come from different backgrounds, help us to find common ground through which we can agree and come up with lasting solutions. As we discuss the affairs of this city, we ask for your will to be made known and done. Help us to be quick to listen and slow to anger when others share ideas. Show us your purposes. Enlighten us that we may know how you want to accomplish our tasks. We desire your glory and blessing in all that we do. Direct our thoughts, our words, our decisions, and our actions towards the right path and help us to stay on track. Let your will be done as decisions are made and plans are put into action. In the holy name of the Lord, amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. City Clerks report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on Thursday, March 17th at 2:48 PM. Councilmember Armandares?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here. All right, under orders of the day, we have none. Under employee introductions, we have a new building inspector in community development. Sharon Goe, our director, will introduce.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community. I'm very happy to introduce a new member to our team. Renz Borisma is our new building inspector. He comes to us with many years of experience in the construction industry. He has also worked as an EMT for a local ambulance company here in Gilroy, although I hope he doesn't have to use those skills during daily building inspections. He's a certified building inspector and plumbing inspector. He lives here in Gilroy, and we're really glad he's here to join us to serve the Gilroy community. So please welcome Renz.
I just want to say it's a pleasure to be working here, and I have an awesome team that I'm working with, so I'm just totally stoked to be working here in this city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to ceremonial items. We have a proclamation proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month. I'm going to read it because we have Anna Andrade from Project Sentinel, who's going to be here to accept it. Let it be known to all persons, the city of Gilroy joins the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, the California Department of Fair Employment and Housing, and other housing agencies in the celebration of the 54th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas the Act, including the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988, prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, and national origin; and whereas the state of California additionally prohibits discrimination because of sexual orientation, marital status, ancestry, source of income, disability, medical condition, and age; and whereas the city of Gilroy supports fair housing efforts to eliminate discrimination in housing and recognizes the benefits of Project Sentinel to educate home seekers, apartment managers, and apartment owners on federal and state housing laws, and to investigate complaints of illegal housing discrimination in Gilroy; and whereas the city of Gilroy pledges its commitment to improve housing options and celebrates the value of harmonious and diverse communities by promoting fair housing law. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, on this 20th day of March 2023, along with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month and confirm that the city of Gilroy, as an inclusive community, is committed to fair housing that promotes positive activities by private and public entities to provide or advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of Gilroy. So I'm gonna go down there. You can hold the applause for just a second. Okay. Alan, you want to pull up?
Yes.
Amada?
Yes, you may.
I'm here to, first of all, I'm gonna shake your hand. I'm gonna present you with this proclamation, and please go ahead and say a few words. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Can you all hear me? Okay, wonderful, okay. So first of all, thank you so much for the acknowledgement. We're very pleased to know that the city of Gilroy is supportive, financially supports Project Sentinel, and is affirmatively furthering fair housing. So thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Okay, on to 3.1, which is presentations to the council. This is public comment for items not on the agenda. Ty, do we have, are you counting on this one?
No, Madam Mayor. I'm actually checking to make sure that no one has submitted any speaker cards, because we don't have any at the moment.
Okay, right, they may be all for something on the agenda. Okay, then, seeing nothing on this, oh, maybe someone thinks he has one.
Mr. Espinoza? You can go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you for saying something.
My name is Alan Espinoza, and I live at the Gilroy Garlic Farm RV Park, and this goes right hand in hand with the Fair Housing Act and everything. We've had some issues over there, and I've had a couple of the councilmembers here take up my issues. Some things have been done, and wouldn't you know it, took the act of Congress here to get the wheels of justice, if you will, to spin over there, and things are starting to take shape. There's still some other things that, you know, still haven't happened that, you know, I'm hoping will, and as long as, you know, city council still keeps helping out. We also have a couple of media people that are interested in a follow-up story with this place over here. I'm new to the place. We just barely moved in a year ago, bought one of their tiny homes, and, you know, things just, you know, haven't happened right. But, like I said, a couple of members have helped out and gotten some things going, and I'd just like to say thank you to those folks, and that was it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay?
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to item four, reports of councilmembers. Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to all the linemen that have been working in our community since the windstorms. A lot of them come from outside the area. I saw a lineman's wife on the news that she hadn't seen her husband in four days, so they do a lot for our community, and no one recognized them. Thank you.
Councilmember Armandares.
Yes, one report from the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency, Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency Governing Board. At the meeting, they announced the acquirement of three parcels of land around Casa de Fruta and along 152. It's nearly 100,000 acres from three different property owners, and that land will be for wildlife and environmental conservation, as well as for assisting with the building of the over, what's it called, the wildlife crossing over Pajaco Pass.
That's all. All right. Councilmember Marks?
No report.
Councilmember Hilton?
From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, SVE has earned a clean audit for all six years of its operations. As of September 30th, 2022, the total revenues were $363 million, primarily from the sale of renewable and carbon-free electricity. Operating revenues exceeded the cost of electricity by $63 million, resulting in an operating margin of 17%. Total expenses were $318 million. The increase in operating expenses for the fiscal year 2021 and 2022 is largely the result of increase in energy costs. Expenses for staff compensation, consulting, and other general and administrative expenses increased in 2022 as the organization grew operations and responded to the challenges of a changing business landscape. Given the COVID-19 pandemic, SVE chose to maintain its rate discount at 1% throughout the fiscal year and distributed nearly $3 million in bill credits to Carifera customers. For 2023, the board of directors approved an increase in the SVE rate discount to 4% compared to PG&E electric generation rates, and continues to offer an annual $100 bill credit to income-qualified customers. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
I have no report.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick comment up. Last week, the mayor, I, and Councilmember Bracco were part of the South County Youth Task Force, and I want to congratulate our chief of police, who's our new chair, and also City Manager Morgan Hill, Christina Turner, who's our VP, Chair. And I just want to thank our county supervisor and all the folks who joined us for that meeting. I think we had a great discussion, and I'm hoping for good things for Gilroy, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. That was not Councilmember Bracco, though.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, making sure.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, as Councilmember Tovar said, I attended the South County Youth Task Force Policy Team Meeting. Our chair this year is Chief Espinoza, and vice chair elected was Christina Turner. Regarding the strategic plan update, that is still a work in progress, so there's a few more months. They're trying to really hone in on the nitty gritties of what that's gonna look like. The parking lot ribbon cutting that was already rescheduled once and was going to be tomorrow has been postponed again because of the rain, so March 28th, 4:00 PM, will be that. And then the state of the city, I hope you've all seen some of that coming out. I did the Chamber of Commerce's event last week, but the one hosted by the city is on Saturday, April 1st, and I certainly hope to see all of my fellow councilmembers there. Supervisor Aranis will be there, too, Morgan Hill Mayor, Mark Turner, and quite a few others. So should be a nice event right here on Saturday, April 1st, 9:30 AM. Okay, moving on to council correspondence. Item 5.1, that's, I'm gonna talk about that one. A few weeks ago, Mayor Matt Mahon convened all of the mayors of Santa Clara County, and all but two of the 15 were in attendance. The support letter that he asked the mayors to sign, if we wanted to, is in the packet, in the council packets. And what some of the mayors asked was whether or not they could have some time to see if their councils wanted to support, too, rather than only asking the mayors. So I have signed on as the mayor, as an individual as the mayor, but I'm here tonight asking if there is a council majority that would like for there to also be a support letter from the council. So that's why this is here, and that is up to you guys. Okay, one, two, three, four. Okay, so that's four plus myself, five, so I guess, okay, I'll be drafting a letter on behalf of the council.
I supported that. I voted late, but.
Oh, sorry, didn't see. Okay, I'll be drafting that letter then. Thank you. All right, moving on to item six, future council-initiated items. Okay, item seven, board and commission interviews. Interviews for open seats on boards, commissions, and committees with terms that expired or vacant as of March 20th for future appointment. Ty, you're going to give us this report?
No staff report, but we do have two applicants for you to interview for tonight, but first, council has to accept the one applicant for the application that was received after the application date.
Okay, so my understanding is both of these applicants have applied for the Parks and Recreation Commission. There are two openings on the Parks and Rec Commission, so does this council wish to accept the late application?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, it's been accepted? Or is that enough? Okay. And so now I will call up the two candidates, if you could come on up. And I see seats that are meant just for you. Right, right here. Boards, commissions, see those two seats right there, the signs? Yeah, right there. Thank you. Okay.
First candidate is Vincent Sasso.
Thank you, Vincent. Just, you've done this before, so just go ahead and tell us what commission you're, the commission you're applying for, so the public can hear it, too, and what you'd like us to know.
You all do look familiar. I think I've been here before, but I'm Vincent Sasso. I lived here on Sixth Street for 30 years, and then I was born and raised on the ranches in Coyote Valley for 45. And the family's been here from Sicily since 1921, and I want to keep getting involved with the city of Gilroy. And this goes back maybe six months to a year ago. I was introduced to someone, and they said, "Well, what do you do?" And I said, "Well, I help out, you know, I'm like six inches tall, man, I'm a public servant." Then that person says, "You're not doing much for the city of Gilroy yourself." And I said, "Well, I'm gonna get involved," and that's why I'm here tonight, for the Parks and Rec position. And a few more things I have. I'm passionate about the people. I know they like the parks. Someday, we'll have summer here without rain, and the parks are well-kept, except for once in a while, you'll have a little fire in the restroom. And that happens, so. And I like to collaborate with people, so any type of community-based organizations, we could work well together with the Parks and Rec, and I think I'd be a good candidate for it. I'll try my best. Thank you.
All right, before you leave, I'm gonna ask the council, would someone else like to just choose a question, or does someone have a burning question that we can ask both of the candidates, so that it's the same question? Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, and thank you for offering to be part of this. Could you tell me maybe what are some of the changes that you would like to see personally in regards to being on this commission?
I like to be involved in more of checking on the cleanup process when parks need to be cleaned up. Summer's coming, like I said. Families want to enjoy it. I don't mind if we have to go out in groups to clean the park, and I think they're doing a good job. I'd like to see more of the dog parks, maybe a little more cleanup of that. And if it has to be done and they don't have the staff, I don't mind helping with other groups to go out there and do that. And I'm available whenever it's possible to clean up, when the sun comes out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, one more question?
Thank you, Mr. Sasso. What ideas do you have to make programs more accessible, paid programs in Parks and Rec, to make them more accessible to youth or members of our community who can't afford them?
Do they have to be paid?
There are, I'm talking about those specifically. You know, there's programs that you can sign up for, recreation programs, soccer and basketball and camps.
Yeah, I'm involved heavily with the senior center. We have programs there, and some are small fee and some are no fee involved. And for, you know, the seniors, some of them just live on Social Security, and they don't have pensions, they don't have the retirement or whatever. But then for the, like, the soccer teams and so on, aquatic park and so on, can you lower the fees? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm asking what ideas you might have to make those more accessible, like lowering the fees, things like that.
Well, that's one of my, can you lower the fees if possible? Can you find out if it could be on a scale of income? So if you make $100,000, can you afford to pay $100 to get your son or daughter in some type of soccer? Or if you make less than $50,000, can you lower that? Just like when you want to repair homes or buildings or whatever, and there's habitat for humanity and so on like that. So I think there's something that all of us could do to work at, if that's something that you really are involved in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Next candidate, Terrence.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor. Terrence Fugazi, you've seen me up here before. I've applied once before for the Parks and Recreation Commission. Have a great deal of interest in increasing my availability and amount of myself that I can donate to the city to help make the city better, now that I have more time. This is certainly one way that I can do it, and I believe that, you know, in addition to the time, which is a big factor, given the attendance records of commissioners of past, of making time and putting your schedule around things, I also have some unique capabilities that I bring to the table in terms of my knowledge and understanding of bringing technology to bear on certain problems and issues that arise, whether that be from how to properly put together an electronic survey to find out how people feel about certain things, to using outreach through social media and whatnot, with my own skills, with podcasting and with video and all sorts of things like that. So I think there's a lot that I can bring to the city, whether it be in this commission or in other ways.
Okay, thank you. So same two questions to you. What changes would you like to see personally?
Well, ironically, the dog park thing is the one that brought me to the table for the Parks and Recreation one, because I do believe that we have an incredible amount of open space that we have. Dog parks in general are a big attraction for cities to bring people into cities from neighboring cities, and I know that because I spend a lot of time in Morgan Hill with my dog. So that's absolutely the case, and we do have that availability, and we do have some nice places that have been provided to us through agreements that we've had with different developments, and they need to take one more step, and I'd like to help and be part of that. I also think that, again, back to the technology side of things, there's probably things that we can help to work on as a commission to bring technology into Parks and Recreation. And to lead into the question from Councilmember Armandares, that also means making things more accessible, there's a couple ways with that. One is making people aware of what is available. With more participation brings down the cost for everybody, because there are fixed costs that you have to everything that you do. So when you bring up the amount of participation, you can possibly bring down the cost. Secondly, the idea of using businesses and local businesses to help sponsor those who are less likely to be able to afford some of these things is certainly something that we should be doing as a community, and then giving props to those businesses for providing such things for, you know, less advantaged community members.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. All right, that concludes the interviews for tonight. The appointments will be at the April 3 meeting? Yes. Okay, thank you both for your applications. Okay, item eight is the consent calendar. I'll start with asking if there's any item to be pulled. If not, I'll go to public comment before we entertain a motion?
No public comments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Armandares, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we have no bids and proposals, so that brings us to item 10, public hearings. This is the appeal of the Planning Commission decision to deny an application proposing changes to the city code to allow up to two electronic billboards in the city of Gilroy. This is a de novo, do I need to read that? Maybe not. Okay, so I'm gonna start with asking the council, I'm gonna start with Councilmember Bracco and just come on down, if you have any ex parte communications, if you have had any.
I met with Mrs. Connie Rogers.
Okay. And if you learned anything new, please do share. Okay. And Councilmember Armandares?
Yeah, and we have to reveal, folks who have interest in the.
You're supposed to disclose anybody you spoke with on this subject, and then, in addition to that, if there's any information to share, share that, but otherwise, it's just who you spoke to on the subject.
Okay. I spoke to Mr. Conrato, and I learned a little bit about the billboard in terms of its illumination and things. And I also spoke to Connie Rogers.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marks?
I spoke to Mike Conrato and Connie Rogers, but no new information, other than what has already been shared.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yeah, I've done extensive, same thing, engagement with the community, but I haven't gained any knowledge of anything.
Right, this is for naming people, not just the community in general. Have you spoken to individual people to name?
I couldn't even come up with a list of names, no.
Okay. Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Conrato, and I also spoke with Connie Rogers, and I also spoke with some of the managers at the car dealerships, but I didn't learn anything new.
Okay. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also spoke to Mr. Conrato, Mrs. Rogers, and I learned quite a bit on both ends, obviously, sort of what Mr. Conrato feels in the dealerships, and obviously what Mrs. Rogers and most of the community feel as well, so.
Okay, and I, too, met with Mr. Conrato, I met with Connie Rogers, and I had a phone call today with Brian Verden of, I don't know if I pronounced that right, of Nissan, the car dealership Nissan.
Can I have also a clarifying question for the city attorney, too? But go ahead.
I forgot somebody.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot, with Pete Garrio of Outdoor Communications, I believe.
Okay. And Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, sorry, I meant that I spoke with Mrs. Rogers, and I also spoke with Mr. Garrio as well, but I didn't learn anything from him.
Okay, and you have a question for the city attorney at this point?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm aware that this is probably something that concerns with the Levine Act, the guidance that you gave us earlier this year about accepting campaign donations from anybody in aggregate of $250 or more, and how it goes, you know, 12 months back and 12 months ahead of that. So if you could give a little clarity, we haven't talked about it since early December on it, and I believe this is one of the situations that would affect us.
Well, the council member is correct, we haven't talked about this since reporting that, in fact, it was not retroactive to 2022, right? However, the council member may have to declare a conflict if you have accepted $250 or more from anybody relating to this matter.
And then at the same time, too, from tonight's decision, in the next 12 months?
It goes forward 12 months.
Forward 12 months, thank you.
Right.
What goes forward, that we cannot accept donations, or we have to report donations from them?
That you cannot accept donations.
So we need to report any donations?
But I thought you said in 2022 it did not.
It does not go backward to 2022, right?
Right, that's what I thought you told us earlier.
That was a decision, excuse me, yes, that was a decision that the FPPC made, not to go retroactive.
So, Councilmember Hilton, what is your question for tonight?
This, my question is, was answered, but at the same time, it's a precaution, because it's not just what goes backwards, it's what goes forward. So for anybody that's gonna accept campaign donations in the next 12 months of any decision that gets made tonight, that's something for us to be aware of, and it's something that needs to be brought to our attention.
Well, lucky for us, there's no election in the next 12 months.
But it is, the council member is correct, and it is a fact that we will have to consider.
Thank you.
Andy, could you clarify for me? So we, tonight, we have to, do we have to declare if we've received donations retroactively? I mean, from, in the past from them? If they're on tonight?
It's not a declaration, it's a recusal, actually.
Yeah, no, at this point, we don't, because the FPPC decided that it did not apply to donations that were made last year.
Yeah, the council member is, I guess, bringing up tonight something for the future.
Right, no, I understand.
If there's nothing, yeah, nobody should be in a position of needing to recuse tonight.
I wasn't clear what, but that was my question, Andy, it's like, you said we have to report, but that's only for 2023.
At this point, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Cindy?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, we are hearing an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of an electronic billboard ordinance and the final initial study and mitigated negative declarations. Council, this is, although the Planning Commission denied the application, this is a de novo hearing, at which the council will use their independent judgment to decide if the environmental review is adequate, and if so, whether or not to introduce the ordinance. City, current city code prohibits electronic billboards and any off-site advertising signs, and any lighted signs that flash on or off, or utilized scrolling or moving text, such as electronic messages. The city also has standards related to height and other location for freeway-oriented signs and regional serving commercial signs. We received an application to modify city code to allow electronic billboards, and also to create a new ordinance which sets up development standards. to create a new ordinance, which sets up development standards and operational standards for billboards, a permit requirement, and also a requirement for a development agreement, for which the council could decide additional standards related to a particular ordinance or a particular billboard. I want to briefly give you project history, just to point out that the city has been given a lot of thought to this, and whether or not they would even consider an application to change the code. In 2020 and 2021, public meetings were held with the city council, the public had an opportunity to comment during the SEQA review period. We also had a community meeting back in October of 2022, and two Planning Commission public hearings. On February 2, the Planning Commission denied the proposed ordinance and also recommended denial of the SEQA document. On February 21, an appeal is filed. As part of this project, the city hired a third-party environmental consultant with direct experience on billboards and the technical expertise to complete the analysis. Based on that analysis, the consultant prepared mitigations. Those mitigations and the analysis available for public review, based on public comment, the consultant modified the mitigated negative declaration with new mitigations, and those amendments are provided in the final MND. Although staff is recommending approval of the SEQA documents, approval of these documents does not constitute approval of the proposed billboard. The city has received many letters, emails, and petitions from over 150 individuals or organizations, both for and against the project. Cited benefits include the ability to advertise local, regional, and national businesses, and also advertise local events and emergency communications. Concerns included aesthetic impacts, impacts to astronomical pursuits, potential litigation, driver safety, light pollution, energy consumption, greenhouse gas emissions, and light impacts on wildlife and humans. As I mentioned, there was a community meeting on October 25, where we heard a lot of the same concerns, and also questions as to why we were processing the applicant's application. With that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution adopting the SEQA documents. And then, staff has provided the council with two options. Number one is to deny the appeal and essentially uphold the Planning Commission's decision to deny the zoning amendment application, or the city could uphold the appeal and read the ordinance into the record and then bring it back for a second reading. Alternatively, the council could also apply modifications to the proposed ordinance before the first reading. This concludes my presentation. We also have a presentation from the SEQA consultant. So she's going to come up now, I'm going to switch slides.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Sue Lee. I'm with First Carbon Solutions. We're a third-party SEQA environmental consultant retained by the city to prepare this environmental review or SEQA document for the proposed billboard ordinance project. Thank you for allowing me to give a brief presentation for the SEQA process and also talk about how we analyze impacts and come up with a determination. I'm also available to answer questions after the presentation. So when we do the SEQA documentation, our first step is the initial study, and it doesn't matter if the outcome is an initial study mitigated negative declaration, ISMND, which is this case, or a document called EIR that is a higher level of effort for projects that have significant impacts. You start at the same step, which is preparing an initial study, which is a checklist question that has checklist, initial study checklist, that has 20 topical areas that we have to analyze, and is based on the state SEQA guideline, and with specific thresholds that were adopted by the city of Gilroy. And as we prepare this initial study, we would then determine whether if there are impacts that, if there are no impacts, then we'll prepare a negative declaration. If there are impacts that could be reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures, which is this case, we prepare an initial study mitigated negative declaration, the ISMND. And a preparation of an EIR is triggered when the lead agency is presented with substantial evidence that the proposed project would have a significant impact on the environment that cannot be reduced with design feature or abiding with existing regulations or mitigation measures. That's when the EIR is triggered. But that's not the case here. The proposed project would have all impacts reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures. And it's important to note that when we prepare the initial study, sometimes we have, based on experience, we could anticipate the project would be likely an ISMND, just based on past experience, working on similar projects. But it commonly happens that when we prepare the initial study, we determine, you know, that's what the initial study is for. You analyze the project, and you find out there are actually significant impacts, and then we would alert the city immediately, and then we would pivot to preparing an EIR versus preparing an ISMND. And on this slide, here's the table with all the topical areas that we analyze as part of SEQA. All the boxes that are checked are the topical areas that are found to be potentially significant but reduced to less than significant levels, which is aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, and mandatory findings. Here, I would like to talk about how we analyze an impact and how we determine if an impact is, you know, less than significant, or, you know, reaches beyond the threshold to become a significant impact. And this is especially relevant to this project, because there are concerns from the public about topics that could be subjective, like if the billboard is too bright, or the billboard is too distracting. So I would like to talk about how we analyze that impact and determine, you know, what the meter of significance where that impact lies. So we start by evaluating, we start by looking at the baseline condition of the site, meaning what's out there, the existing condition of the site. You know, is it a pristine environment with, you know, untouched by human activities, with no, little to no light sources? Or is it, you know, next to a heavily traveled roadway in the industrialized area with, you know, numerous existing light sources? Then we look at the project and how the project would change that current condition. And let's say the current conditions here, and the project would change it, you know, to here, then the delta is what we consider to be the impact caused by the proposed project. So we're not necessarily analyzing from zero. We keep in mind what is already out there, and then how the project would change the And once we have that impact, we compare it against any identified thresholds and standards, like any applicable regulations that are already in place, designed to safeguard human health and safety. So when, if the project would comply with regulation and standards, that means the impact would be determined to be less than significant, and project, you know, consistent with, or less than threshold would be less than significant. And similar to the billboard ordinance before you today, you're considering approving a set of strict parameters that, if approved, future proposed billboard would have to abide by in order to, you know, make sure, maintain that the impacts would be, you know, below threshold. And one other thing to highlight is that in order to provide an objective analysis, we really use government sources, like sources from the city of Gilroy, or Santa Clara County, or U.S. Department of Transportation, et cetera. One more thing I would like to highlight, too, is the public disclosure and input requirement under SEQA. Pursuant to, you know, SEQA, the public review period for the project's ISMND was 30 days, and it began on August 2022 and ended in September. And that ISMND was available for review at the city's planning website, at the planning department, and also at the Gilroy Public Library. Also, the city released a notice of intent to adopt, which is a notice that tells the public, the city has prepared this environmental document for this proposed project. Here's the project description, here's where you can access that documentation, here's, you know, how long you have to review and provide comments, and here's the anticipated public hearing date, you know, for the proposed project. And that notice was released via advertisement at the Gilroy Dispatch newspaper, and also mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the proposed billboard location. And although SEQA does not require written responses to public comments for ISMNDs, which is only a requirement for EIRs, the city elected to prepare a final ISMND with responses to public comments received during the public comment period. And even with the comment letters that were received after the public comment period, the city and us, the SEQA consultant, have reviewed those letters, and we find that there's nothing in the comments that would change the finding in the ISMND, and it didn't have new information that would cause the need to recirculate the ISMND, meaning revise the ISMND and then send it back out for public review, or to prepare an EIR, meaning that there are significant impacts identified. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Tovar, did you have a question of Cindy or of the consultant?
Well, it might be for both, but Cindy also. So just part of clarification, I just want to make sure that everyone understands, when we say up to two billboards, are we talking both sides, right? We're not talking about two physical billboards, correct?
Yes, so the ordinance would allow two physical billboards, and they would need to be a mile and a half apart from each other.
Got it. Okay. And then, so going back to sort of the SEQA study, so again, I kind of educated myself a little bit more on what SEQA, what they do. Obviously, they're there to inform decision-makers in the public of environmental effects, proposed activities, and to prevent significant avoidable environmental damage. That's the goal of SEQA. But in the study, what they determined specifically to this project states that there's no significant environmental impact. Am I incorrect in saying that?
That's correct. No significant environmental impacts that would not be reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures.
Okay. And then the next question, and maybe Cindy. So in here, there's this statement that the ordinance conflicts with the Gilroy 2040 general plan vision statement, right? Now, it's my understanding that the general plan is not inclusive, it is meant to be updated regularly, right, to adapt to new changes, right? So the statement here says that it conflicts with the general plan. I'm trying to understand if that's accurate, because again, I think we recently approved change to allow design build, and it wasn't part of the general plan, but we sort of, we made that change, right? So the question I'm asking again is, is it something that conflicts with the general plan, or is it just something that's not in the general plan?
So the, when the city, the staff provided the recommendation to the Planning Commission, we found that it was consistent with the general plan. The Planning Commission's denial included discussion that it was not consistent with the general plan. However, you are correct, the general plan is a dynamic document, and it can be updated over time.
Okay, thank you.
I'll save my question, I'll allow others to ask.
Yeah. Okay, just, okay, go ahead.
Cindy, or the consultant, on average, how far away can you see the screen?
How far, I'm not sure how far it can be seen, but I know the light output is .3 foot candle per 250 feet. So that's how bright it would be. At that point, it would kind of blend in with the surrounding, but I'm not sure when, how far you can see the billboard.
Okay, good.
Okay, you have another question?
Yeah, let's try to allow others to ask.
Okay. Well, there's, yeah, no, there's going to be a lot of opportunity. We have a lot of public that wants to chime in, too. I just want to say, you mentioned design build, Councilmember Tovar. That was something that went to the voters. That's not what, yeah, you're talking about here.
Okay.
Okay, so are there any other questions of the council at this stage? Go ahead.
Well, yeah. So in here, it states that, again, the car dealers are a big source of tax revenue, right? And it's my understanding that having the billboards can generate 5% to 20% more revenue. And so, again, I don't know what that number would look like in regards to what that would bring to the city for projects that need to be paid for, or, so can you give me some sort of background on that? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Tovar. At this point in the process, we've conducted no financial analysis that, that would be based completely on an agreement between the city and whoever develops the sign. The reason why we don't do that is because it's not even permitted at this time. So if council was to approve the ordinance, then we would move forward and identify particular economics with the sign, but those two processes are completely separate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, then. I see 20, I thought I saw 22 speakers?
I have 20 speaker cards, and that's also including the appellant, so that's 21 inside the system.
Okay.
The appellant has five minutes to speak on.
Yes, so, so public comment is about to begin. The first comment, the first and last go to the appellant. So whoever wants to come and, whoever wants to come and speak on behalf of the appellant, you have five minutes. All the other speakers, because of the number of speakers, that's at one minute each, correct?
We have 20 speaker cards, so that's up to the mayor's purview to decide if it's one minute, and it's one minute.
Okay, and then the very last speaker will be also the appellant, who will have two minutes at the very end. Okay, so that's how this will go, so everybody knows.
[inaudible]
Oh, so I'm opening the public hearing at 6:48 PM. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Sean Marciniac. I'm with Hanson Bridget on behalf of Outfront Media. There's a lot of passion with this project, which is good. We want to focus tonight on what's before you. It's a surgically designed ordinance that would allow for a maximum of two signs in the city's urban pockets, mostly exclusively commercial and industrial areas. So, you know, one question is, what does that look like? Here's an example. So tonight, before you use the ordinance, if the city council were to adopt the ordinance, Outfront would apply for a sign at this location that I'm showing on the screen. It's in auto row. The sign is centered in a parking lot with heavy trucks. It's adjacent to a Tesla dealership to the north. And you can see that you have a lot of lights, you have signage, you have illuminated signage, you have a fleet of Model 3s and Model Ys in the parking lot. And I think that something that's been brought up is, well, this is, this is the decision point at which Gilroy decides to modernize, but that's not the case. Gilroy has already made the decision to modernize. You have a Tesla dealership. I think the question tonight is, do these digital signs, are they compatible with these modern pockets of the city? What do these signs look like? What you're looking at here is a light footprint map. What does... What this shows on the left is if you're looking at a digital sign from the side, and it shows you, it's sort of like a heat map, right? The red is where there's intense brightness, and then it peters out. That's the blue cooler color. And what it shows is that after 250 feet, the light, the brightness doesn't register on a light meter. Can you see the sign beyond 250 feet? Sure. But it won't, the area of impact is only 250 feet. Now, on the right-hand side, that is an overhead view of a sign location. And what you see is that the light barely touches the ground. Now, you're going to hear a lot of talk, and you've probably read a lot, that these signs cause colorectal cancer, diabetes, dementia. None of that's true. And the people that oppose the sign, they know that. And how do I know that? Because they said it. That's a snapshot from one of their letters. And you'll see on the bottom, and this is a scientist saying this, they admit there's no study that has concluded that digital signs cause disease and other maladies. So what that means is you can focus on the policy. Your environmental consultant has gone through and determined there's no impacts. Opponents have acknowledged there's no health impacts. It's really about policy. Do you want this sign? Does your community want this sign? And some people don't, and that's, that's fine, we respect that. But there's at least 90-plus local business people that do want it, and you're going to hear from some of them tonight, and they can't all make it because they have businesses to run. But there is a healthy, broad contingent that wants the sign. Now, you've also heard in the letters, don't get into business with Outfront, they're litigious. They threw, they scoured the entire country for 10 lawsuits, and they threw those into a packet. Mind you, some of those lawsuits, we were on the same side as the city. I want to talk about that really briefly. Outfront operates 500,000 signs throughout the United States, and lawsuits are an inevitability. If you look at darling companies like Patagonia, they've been sued 129 times in the last 10 years. Lowe's, 6,500 lawsuits. Costco, who doesn't love a buck fifty hot dog and the chickens? 7,900 lawsuits. Even Oprah Winfrey. Who has a beef with Oprah Winfrey? 77 people. So, you know, 10 lawsuits, look, we deal with thousands of local governments, state governments and federal government agencies. And if someone is going to tell me that sometimes government agencies don't violate the law, I mean, I don't care what your political affiliation is. All you got to look is the federal government for the last 15 years, and anybody is going to pick out a half a dozen instances where the government has infringed on our rights. It's an inevitability, and 10 lawsuits is not a big deal. I'm going to turn the mic over to Mike Conrato. It's his property where we'd be proposing a sign. I just want to point out again that it said 80-plus there, now we have 90-plus people that are supporters of the sign.
I'm sorry, but your five minutes is up. So you'll have to save it for the end. You have two minutes at the end. It's five minutes and then two.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, yep. All right, so moving on to regular speakers. Ty, do you want to start calling? It would be most helpful if those of you who are planning to speak could come sit in the front rows, so we don't lose so much time with people getting to the podium. Ty, can you please call the?
Yes, the first five speakers are Terrence Fugazi, followed by Danny Mitchell, followed by Ron Kirkish, followed by Tom Chavez, followed by Les Levitt.
Okay, so one minute will be on the timer.
We had to scratch out a lot, Mayor.
Well, that's why I say one to three minutes, so everybody can prepare for what it might be.
That's okay. I edited. Anyway, you guys, I'm here, you guys know me, Terrence Fugazi, 27 years in marketing, lead generation. I know a little bit about this stuff. I attended the Planning Commission meeting, listened to all the points from both sides near the end. One of the commissioners asked one of the executives at Outfront Media, how much an ad might cost? His answer blew me away, being a marketing person myself. He said, "We don't know." Well, you know, this business, you know, this change has been something sold to the Gilroy public. They got lots of petitions going around and whatnot. I think it's pretty important to understand the cost, and the people who are supporting this from business, I think many of them don't really understand the cost. This is a very expensive sign to rent media on. Article in 2018 MOVIA Media, cost is said to be 16 grand for eight seconds in an eight ad rotation on the 101 corridor. I just went out and looked at, for the sign on Duane Avenue, on Flip Hound, it's $20,000 for a month of advertising with an eight second. I don't know that places like the Quinceañera Couture or Garlic City.
A minute goes by really fast. Sorry.
Yep, I know, it's a minute.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Danny Mitchell.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to support our applicant, Mike Conrato, on his five-year project that he's endeavored to try to get this advertising medium approved.
I'm sorry, Ty, can you start the clock?
We appeal to this council, who has been very business-supported over the last number of years. It speaks for itself in the newsletter that was out this year outlining the accomplishments of this council and their business-friendly nature. We also point to the mayor's state of the city, where she reiterated some of the things that this council is developing, all in the interest of business in this community. We really wish to continue this with the support of this particular medium that will act not as a sign, a physical sign, but as a beacon to the South County to support the businesses and those businesses that are looking to come to Gilroy. We ask you to be supportive of this, and we thank you for your time and your extra effort. For those who chose to reach out to get more information on this particular subject, we thank you for that extra effort. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Ron Kirkish.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. How much will the city have to pay for construction of the sign? Zero. How much will the city have to pay for maintenance of the sign? Zero. Will the sign generate sales tax for the general fund? Yes. Will the sign help drive customers to our local businesses? Yes. Will the sign cause cancer? No more than the signs in Las Vegas and Lake Tahoe do. As a matter of fact, if it does, maybe Coppertone can create a sunscreen for it, or a sign screen. Will the sign cause the James Lick Observatory problems? No. The observatory is located in the hills, looking over the third-largest city in California already. It is time to use some common sense and do what's best for our community and its businesses and pass this ordinance allowing the sign. I support Mr. Cavoto. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Les Levitt.
I respect the earlier council decision to look into this, but what is before you today is a major overhaul to the sign code. What you're likely to see, if this is approved, are massive billboards advertising national brands most of the time. If you go see with your own eyes the billboards in Santa Clara, you'll see ads for Cotter, the country in the Middle East, Chuck Chancy Casino 150 miles away, San Diego, Los Banos, Disneyland, Fox TV, Chevron, McDonald's. The closest thing we saw to a local ad was for the SAP Center, which is a large business. You also have to consider, if you open the gate to two billboards, expect more. Other billboard companies will be visiting. And if you only give the green light to one, the others will be ready to do whatever it takes to get their way, arguing that land use and zoning rules must be applied equally. Billboards can be very distracting to city government, consuming a never-ending amount of staff and city attorney time.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Next five speakers are Dr. Paul Lineman, Jason Hemp, Gregory Bum, Brian Verden, followed by Connie Rogers.
Evening. Well, science is the search for truth, the truth needs no defense. Keep the faith with the General Plan, which explicitly states, limit light pollution from outdoor sources, including policy LU 8.7 and several others. I quote, minimize any negative impact on the visual environment. Secondly, require the adoption of the International Dark Sky Association's guidelines, as recommended previously, which has been consistently rebuffed. Third, for the greater public good, listen to collective wisdom, multitudes of public health researchers saying curb surging light pollution at night, immediate measures to reduce artificial light at night, switch off night advertising. The World Health Organization, the American Medical Organization, Association, BreastCancer.org, the Sleep Foundation, and many others, listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jason Hemp.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Jason, I'm a San Jose resident and occasional visitor to Gilroy. I bring a cautionary tale. In San Jose, the applicant's representative, Outfront, has recently filed a lawsuit to the city challenging a no-bid contract to their competitor, which has forced and halted billboards that were proposed and planned along the San Jose Airport. So as my earlier colleague stated, once you open the floodgates, there are going to be more than two proposals coming before you. I just would advise you that. And also, I'd like to add that I enjoy the vistas, I enjoyed the billboard-free landscape as I commuted here tonight, and I hope we can keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Gregory Bum.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you. My name is Gregory Bum, I'm the owner of Gilroy Motorcycle Center, and I'm here to voice the support for, in favor of, the digital sign. As small business owners, we don't have a whole lot of access to millions and millions of funds to do advertising, to draw in more business, draw in more customers, which in turn generates more income. And income means higher pay for employees, hire more people. Instead of losing those jobs to the dot-com companies in Silicon Valley and San Jose, stay local. If Gilroy can do that, that would be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Brian Verden.
City Council members, Mayor Brian Verden, General Manager, Nissan of Gilroy. I'm here for the support of the change in the ordinance for, to allow the billboard. Pretty simple for me is, I was asked if I would advertise, and a lot of the dealers agreed they would advertise on the billboard, because we really have no representation other than the two dealers that are located close to the freeway. Nissan of Gilroy is a project, I want to thank you all for helping us. The city of Gilroy has been great with the building project. We've been there for a couple of years now, and I believe that this particular ordinance, if it were passed, it would help out local businesses. We all support local community events, local charities, and local nonprofits, where a lot of outside businesses do not in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Connie Rogers.
I urge you to deny the mitigated negative declaration and deny the change to our sign ordinance, because I believe the conclusions reached in the MND are wrong. It was very narrow in scope, and it does not consider the effects beyond the size of the six-acre lot that it's on. Most cities are trying to eliminate off-site billboards. We are very fortunate that we have none inside our city limits right now, and our former mayor, Roberta Hewin, was very proud of the fact that we don't have any billboards inside the city limits. Approval without knowing specifically what benefits you are going to get out of it is not a good business practice. I would hope you would not agree to that. And many Gilroy residents are against this constantly changing sign. It would be ugly, stressful, distracting, and unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Next five speakers are the following: Gary Gordon, Mary Yates, Michelle Nelson, Mauricio Leon, Eduardo Martinez.
Okay, whoever's name was called first should be at the podium.
I am Gary Gordon, General Manager of Gilroy Chevrolet. I'll keep it short and simple, I'm in support of Mike and the sign. The tax dollars that are generated from vehicle sales is huge, I mean, it's hundreds of millions of dollars. The jobs benefits is huge. The more cars we sell, the more people we can employ, the more tax dollars we're going to produce for the city. Because the more cars you sell, the more staff you have to add to help you expedite those sales. So to keep it short and simple, I mean, there's already signs along the freeway, there's already lights in the sky, the horse is out of the barn on that one. I mean, I don't see how a sign's going to cause any more harm to the city than good. If you look at the old Ben Franklin adage, there's going to be way more good that's going to come of the sign than bad. Just jobs alone is going to create tax dollars. That's my feeling on it, that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mary Yates.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Mary Yates, and I've lived here 40-plus years now. When I moved to Gilroy, we only had 17,000 people. Now we have over 58,000. However, Gilroy still maintains its reputation as a friendly city, and it's due to its engendering sort of rural character. I think word of mouth has always been the best advertisement or the worst advertisement, and Gilroy has always had a good advertisement for its car dealerships. So I don't see that adding billboards will really increase their revenue. Not only that, but we have to consider more than just our car dealerships in this town. We need to consider the whole community. So I think it would be best to follow the advice of your Planning Commission, who denied the application to begin with, because they're looking at the whole community, they are your advisors, please follow their advice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Michelle Nelson.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Nelson. And I'm.
Barely hear you, Michelle.
Okay. I'm opposed to any idea behind the electronic billboard. You know, the decision of the Planning Commission, yes, it was close, but it was a very thorough discussion. I hope all of you watched that meeting. I have two questions. Does your community want the sign? That's a repeat of the question that was raised earlier. And also, there were 150 comments received. I would like, I'd be curious to know what the percentage was in favor versus the percentage opposed, because it was very clear from the Planning Commission comments and submissions that the majority of the people who are submitting any kind of comments were opposed. And I believe that you should listen to the experts at Lick Observatory as to what constitutes significant impact as far as the light pollution. We should be doing everything we can to reduce rather than to increase. Just because we have light doesn't mean we should make it worse than it already is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Mauricio Leon.
City Council, Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity. I am here in support of the sign. My family and I have been business owners in Gilroy for close to 30 years, we're located downtown. While I feel a sign like this wouldn't be so beneficial for a business like ours, that you have to zigzag through the cities of Gilroy to get to, I think it'd be beneficial for the businesses around the freeway, which also brings income into our city. Also, as a father of three, my wife and I have an eight-year-old, a six-year-old, and we adopted a 16-year-old last year. And just thinking of our community, God forbid if anything were to happen in our community where a big announcement or attention needs to go out, just like the little boy that was missing about three weeks ago that, you know, luckily was found unharmed, in case of any major, you know, children missing or something like that, I believe that this sign could help put the, spread the word out to the communities a lot faster. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Eduardo Martinez.
Yo, perdón, hablo, no hablo muy bien el inglés, pero yo estoy de acuerdo que se ponga el sign del, para promover más los pequeños negocios. Tengo un restaurante, soy dueño, y con la pandemia pues nos pasó a perjudicar algo, y yo creo que eso nos va a beneficiar a los que tenemos unos pequeños negocios, y yo estoy de acuerdo que lo apruebe. Gracias.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We don't translate for people, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Next, the final six speakers I have are. Next, the final six speakers I have are Javier Leon, Fiesta Depot, Josue Martinez, Claire B. Braga, Juan Estrada, and Rani Fisher.
Mayor, I know you say we don't translate, but just snapshot, this gentleman is in favor of the sign.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you. We don't translate because we can't be responsible for how that translation goes. Okay, so, right, okay, thank you. A person's words is, are a person's words, yeah. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the community, the community and leaders. My name is Javier Leon. I've been in business for a little bit over 30 years. And before that, I used to work as a news director for a Spanish and English radio station. So, I believe in publicity, and I think that it'd be a good idea to give a vote and something like that before, actually. Besides that, for our own safety, if, it could work for all of us, for our kids, for all the community. So, hopefully, we'll vote yes on that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas noches, Mayor and Council. My name is Roma Peraza. Este, yo tengo, voy a decirlo en español. Okay. Oh, sorry. Yo tengo un negocio en downtown. El nombre de mi negocio es Fiesta Depot, y estoy aquí para expresar mi firme apoyo a la aprobación de el letrero moderno que va a beneficiar a la ciudad de Gilroy. Un letrero moderno brindará la visibilidad necesaria a las empresas locales de Gilroy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
She owns a business downtown, and she's in favor.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Josue Martinez.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Josue Martinez, and I'm a future business owner. As I will one day inherit my family's business here in the city of Gilroy, a modern-day digital billboard would possibly affect businesses. Even businesses that don't advertise on the billboard will be beneficial from traffic flowing into the city of other types of ads. We need to put Gilroy on the map, and this is a great way to let people driving on the 101 freeway know we are here. Please support this digital billboard. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Claire B. Braga.
Good afternoon. I am Claire Braga. I am owner of the Chama Nativa Brazilian Steakhouse. So, we just came here four months ago. Yeah, I am here. I agree with you guys to support this sign, and I am agree with you 100%. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Juan Estrada.
My name is Juan Estrada. With Green foothills, we echo the serious and substantiated concerns expressed by the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society and Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. A couple of highlights. There will be great impact to wildlife connectivity, which is important to preserve biodiversity and is easily disrupted by lighting. The project is adjacent to the Prince Val Channel, which is a wildlife connectivity corridor and allows permeability between Nueva and Lagas Creeks. The DMND provides no analysis of wildlife movement in the channel, thereby simply dismissing it. Next, there will be an impact to ecosystems, which the biological report underestimates. Recent scientific studies highlight the pervasive cumulative and harmful impacts of artificial light at night to terrestrial and aquatic organisms, species, and ecosystems. We ask you to deny the appeal. Don't approve highway or road-facing electronic billboards. Gilroy should also enact a dark-skies ordinance to evaluate projects like this. And it's unfortunate we were only given one minute, given there are so few speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rani Fisher.
Good evening. I am Rani Fisher from the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. Audubon has been concerned with the impacts of light at night on our environment. We submitted comments on the MND, and we believe that our comments remain valid, and that we have a fair argument based on our comments and on the substantial evidence in the scientific references we provided, that this project will have significant unavoidable impacts to the environment, and an EIR must therefore be prepared. The consultants who responded to our comments and to comments by others repeatedly argue that the issues raised are, quote, "beyond the purview of SEQA." We disagree. But SEQA aside, the comments are relevant to Gilroy and to the South Bay. Science is important. Beauty is important. Health is important. So, if SEQA does not address these issues, then you should.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ton Chavez.
Is that the last one?
Yes, Madam.
Okay, because that's 21 to me. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Council. I was born in 1958 here in Gilroy, and 64-year native. I've seen this community change. Change comes in all different varieties. The electronic billboard, I think, is probably just a matter of looking at the new version of the billboard. The old billboard is very inefficient from a standpoint that, you know, people get tired of it and they don't see it. I think being able to see changes once in a while on a billboard will keep people's safe attention, and would be good for bringing in people for special events, as well as, you know, adding to the Gilroy economy. I also want to reiterate how important I think that the availability for special alerts and emergency notices. I really think that that's very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other speaker cards?
No, Madam.
No? Okay, then now it goes to the appellant, who has two minutes.
Mayor and City Council, thank you. After hearing all this, I think I can speak up loud enough. Number one, your car dealers, which all support this, do over $1 billion worth of business in Gilroy. If this sign was to just bring 5% increase, that's $50 million. If you got 1%, I don't know, Jimmy, you probably know exactly what that amount would be, but that'd be $500,000 alone, coming in extra. The neat thing about the billboard being modern and changing it, it's not any higher or brighter than signs we already have. The Garlic Farm, Gilroy Crossing are just as big, if not bigger, than this sign. You go down the freeway, it's a freeway. It doesn't change the aesthetics of the town. And when everybody says their age here, I was born and raised here, so that's 76 years of being in Gilroy, and I've seen a lot of changes. Advertising for the, you know, a lot of people said, well, the mom and pops don't get their share. Well, the mom and pops, as people come into this town, like the Thursday night of music and the car shows and that, you're going to see them come in. Somebody that sits there, and if you, if any of you have been out there, you're going to sit there in the afternoon. It's bumper to bumper. You're going to be able to read that sign a couple times. And they might say, hey, you know, I live in Hollister, but I'll come back for this car show or this music deal, bring my wife over, and we're going to, they're going to use the restaurants, the mom-and-pop restaurants, and the stores they're going to bring. Everybody knows that, yes, after somebody mentioned that it's a word of mouth, yeah, getting people there the first time. When you eat at a restaurant, you will brag about it, but it's getting them there the first time. The other thing, the tourists. Frank runs our tourist deal in Gilroy. Think about, you know, he put an ad in the little book, MGH Today. It's a beautiful ad. Think what that would be like on this billboard, and how much that would help people come into town to play golf, or eat, or to do a lot of things, shop in the deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councils, I'm closing the public hearing at, oh--
I just wanted to say that we have all of Outfront's senior operations people here, so if you have questions about price points for local businesses--
Okay.
--we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm closing the public hearing at 7:19 PM. Okay? And coming back to council. So, as we've all heard, everybody is here who can answer questions, but I'm looking to see who still has a question versus just wants a discussion. Anyway, if you could either get my attention or use the screen--
I'll use your attention.
Okay, Councilmember Marks.
I would, out of curiosity, like to know how much the ad would really cost. And I have numerous questions, but could we have that person come up? Because we hear all these numbers. I want to deal with facts.
Good. Fair question. Glad you asked. My name is Rob Schilling. I'm responsible for the sales and operations of the inventory in and around this area. The question as to how much it costs and the reason why some of my associates in the past declined to answer is, really, the market will determine that. But we've already put our, put our best foot forward, made the determination that we will hold one spot on each of these faces from now until the end of time for local advertisers. I'll say it right here in the public record. It will be $500 per week. I can assure you that that is unbelievably fair. And we will guarantee that, as I said, we'll put it in the contract if we have to, but that will be for local business owners within a certain, you know, zip codes or whatever, maybe, whatever you determine. But--
So, $500--
We expect it to be, it'll be significantly more than that. Well, not significantly, but we won't be selling it for $500 a week, hopefully. But to you--
Oh, okay.
--we will, to local residents.
But to local people, that would be car dealerships also, or no?
I think we'll save one spot, and we'll have to determine how we use that.
One spot, okay.
Yeah, one spot on each face.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's fair. All right, thank you.
If I can add to that question, Mayor?
Definitely.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, thank you. And reading here, it states that 64, 60-some percent of the ads are local ads, so it's a majority of local ads.
In this instance, yes.
In this instance here. So, but I want to acknowledge the question or the comment that was made earlier regarding the concern that national brands are going to take over local sort of advertising. How does that work? Is that accurate?
So, we say in our world, every sign has a story, and every advertiser is different in every set of circumstances. The sign to which the person referred to earlier in San Jose, I only wish we could get $20,000 a flip. But in San Jose, where it's a bigger market, and national advertisers may be more inclined to want to advertise there, and it's not obviously a knock on Gilroy, but certainly, we just don't know, but we would expect that national brands would be less likely to want to be in a smaller city versus San Francisco, Oakland, et cetera. So, we have built our model around a local sales initiative. We've got 16 sellers between here and Fresno and closer to San Jose, two of which canvass this area. They're calling on local and regional businesses. So, our business model will be focused on local advertisers. Good, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Marks, you weren't finished?
No, I wasn't, but that's--
That's, no, no, no.
But your question was about--
Right, no, he wanted to jump in.
But your question was about cost--
Yes.
--and it was only on one spot--
Right.
--that was answered.
Okay.
So, I think this, next question is for Andy. It was mentioned that if we allow two billboards in our city, and that's what our ordinance would state, other companies could come in and sue. Is that accurate?
Well, it's always a question when somebody says someone can sue, because the answer you have to give is people sue for a variety of things. The ordinance, if it allows two billboards, should be enforceable at that. It could be that there will be an argument over who gets a second billboard, if Outfront applies, if the first one is granted a permit. Other than that, I don't know what other litigation is being referred to in this case.
Okay, so, we're basically pretty safe.
I think that we are safe from that kind of litigation, and pretty safe, yes. I think that's probably accurate.
Okay, and then my last comment is, I don't know how many people in the room have actually gone to look at the exact site where the--
Okay, let's not speak to people in the room. Okay.
Well, okay, but I don't expect them to answer.
Okay, okay.
But last night, I drove by there one more time and looked at it at night, and there are a lot of other signs. I don't know if people are aware that Garlic Farm's sign is 90 feet. So, when they're talking about this sign being 75 feet, it's actually 15 feet shorter. We just approved two meetings ago, an 85-footer for Evergreen on 10th Street. So, I appreciate everyone's comments that they wrote to all of us, but in some of the comments, there was hysteria. And I think hysteria grows from talking to other people, and the emotions start to play, and sometimes the right questions just aren't asked. When I listen to all of this, I realize that, you know, we need money for Gilroy. How many times do we hear, why can't we light up from First Street to 10th Street? Well, lack of money. Why can't we fix all those potholes? Why can't we do all this stuff? Money. And if we are going to, if we have an opportunity to earn this kind of money for the city of Gilroy, I just feel we'd be really foolish to deny it. We'd be, you know, hurting and harming our citizens. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tovar?
Mayor, if it's, if it's time, I would like to make a motion.
I have questions.
Oh, yeah, but I--
Probably not there yet, but--
Not yet.
Okay? Councilmember Armadere?
No, that's why I asked.
Thank you.
I have a question, probably for staff, if they could--
If they could tell us if the illumination level, and I'm not, I don't remember the way the unit is measured, but the illumination level for our existing signs, if you could compare it to the proposed signs? Like, how bright will the new sign be compared to how bright our existing signs are?
So, we don't have any electronic billboards in the city.
Right, but we have lit signs, signs that are already lit, like Garlic, Garlic Farm, yeah.
I can't answer that question. I don't know if the SEQA consultant can answer that question.
The proposed light output level is 0.3-foot candle at 250 feet. I'm not aware of the amount of light level at other lighted signs.
Okay, we don't have anybody who could answer that? From staff?
Maybe we could simplify the question and say, is there an expectation in the environmental review that this sign will be considerably brighter than the other signs?
Thank you, Jimmy. Yeah.
I would say no. It would not be considerably brighter than the other signs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before I continue, I want to go back to Councilmember Tovar, because I, you can make a motion, and if it's seconded, it stands, but we still have discussion. But I do want to say that the first motion needs, we need to first address the mitigated negative declaration. So, if that's the motion you wanted to make, you are welcome to make it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I get the correct wording. So, and then I'll sort of say my, and I want to make sure I say it correctly, so--
Okay, because other council members are still needing to talk.
Yeah, and again, so, I mean, my decision on this is based on data and what SEQA had mentioned, and obviously, and I read every email, and I've talked to everyone I could, and I appreciate all the feedback. But again, one of the things that, as a council, as a city, we're trying to generate more business, and here, the revenue impact that can happen in the businesses, I, so my, I guess my motion would be to move forward on approving the changes, right? I mean, I don't know if that's--
The first motion needs to be on the negative, on whether or not we are adopting the SEQA documents.
Yeah, so it would be a motion to adopt SEQA's findings.
Okay.
And a second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second for, to adopt, to approve the SEQA findings.
Yes.
Okay, so that's going to hold now, and because we still have some council discussion. I see Councilmember Hilton is next.
Yeah, I'll provide some discussion. So, I, you know, I'd like to start off thanking the members of the public for sending, you know, your public comments in, and obviously for showing up tonight. There was a clear overwhelming amount of opposition to the signing. Clearly, most of you have shown up tonight. Whether you're located inside Gilroy or outside Gilroy, this initial environmental report and ordinance that was denied for approval by our planning commission affects the region and our shared climate and environmental goals. So, I appreciate everybody for coming here tonight. The opposition public comments have been coming in consistently since the first public comment period, as staff mentioned, back in October. You know what? And to Outfront Outreach Media, who sent in a public comment letter that really struck me hard, I sent it in last Friday, and I'm not sure categorizing these public comments of opposition as, quote, "outside interest groups who style themselves as fairy godmothers and godfathers here to enlighten city" was a great move on your behalf. I really don't appreciate that. I appreciate a good discussion, but not that. After all, our community in November of 2020, which wasn't that long ago, adopted the general plan in 2040, which reflected our-- general plan in 2040, which reflected our aspirational goals, hopes, and dreams of what Gilroy would be. And zoning ordinance, which we're currently going through right now, is the script on how those dreams will unfold. We decided that we don't want electric billboards, and we don't want off-site advertisement. Since I have been elected, not one constituent has come up to me or raised a concern that they want an electronic billboard. I don't think the scope went far enough either in the initial study mitigated negative debt. The negative effects of light pollution, visual blight, and impact on wildlife are all reasons to deny this appeal and uphold the decision by our planning commission. The ordinance conflicts with the general plan, 2040 general plan, guiding principles, lane use policies, and mobility policy. The ordinance conflicts with the city's interim climate action guidelines regarding lighting and greenhouse gas emissions. And for those reasons, I will be not supporting this appeal tonight or ordinance. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Armandares?
Thank you. I still have a question regarding revenues. And Jimmy, you said earlier, you're not necessarily prepared. We don't have a report. We haven't studied it. But are the numbers accurate in terms of how much, how much our car dealers do in sales? And if so, what percentage does the city gain from that?
Well, yes, the numbers that Mr. Conrada, I think it was Mr. Conrada quoted for our deals, yes, those numbers are correct. They are our number-one tax, sales tax generator. But as for any numbers that would be increased or not, is, in my opinion, speculative at this time. And measuring direct impacts of anything that we do for economic development is always a challenge. So even with, like, when we're talking about the sharks, we've never made a claim that it would, we could show that it was going to make a certain amount of dollars for the city, because we believe the indirect costs were enough to justify it. Back to your original question, though, we have not analyzed this, because this is, again, it's speculative. We don't know what is charged for the ad time, and we don't know how to measure the exact impact, whether or not it can be measured. So we would not use that as staff, as a reason for you to, for us to advocate for or against this particular project.
And what's, but what percentage does the city earn from the car dealers' sales tax?
When a vehicle is sold, it sells for 9.25% sales tax. The city receives 1%.
1% of that sales tax.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you. It is true, though, right, that sales tax revenue that we receive from our auto dealers is the largest source of our sales tax revenue?
That is correct.
I hope that helps, but that is true. Okay, if there are no, I've certainly got stuff to say, too, but there are two councilmembers who haven't said anything. Do either of you want to say anything? Okay, I'm one of the councilmembers who was here in 2018 when this all started, right? A lot of us were, or some of us were. And I, too, recommended that this move, I was one who recommended that this go forward, that staff look into this. And for all the reasons that are revenue, the problem I'm having, and it is a very difficult problem, is that I would, I would be very supportive of putting this kind of a sign in Gilroy if it were being driven by our local, whether auto dealers or whatever, to advertise there. The problem I'm having is, I feel like the, since 2018, to get to this point, we have got the cart before the horse, because we have nine auto dealers in Gilroy, nine new auto dealers in Gilroy, 20 used auto dealers. It's only been in the last few days that we've heard from any of them. And even that, we have now heard from three. So two who wrote in, one who's here tonight, and another who's here tonight that didn't write in. So there's a lot of unknown, because to me, there is no question whatsoever about the value of advertising, absolutely. But if who is on that sign is not a Gilroy business, we got to realize that Morgan Hill Ford could be on there, not even just one, not a business here, but a business that actually competes with us. So I'm not trying to change anybody's mind up here, or people, how they feel. I'm just expressing disappointment from what I thought was the original course for this back in 2018 going forward. And I do, by the way, support the motion that's on the table right now. I do think that this has gone through the appropriate CEQA requirements. I don't think it needed to go further. So that part, I'm going to be supportive of. But the rest of it is where I have a problem.
Mayor?
Okay, yes, and then?
Yeah, and I respect your comments there. And, you know, I agree with you on that aspect where there is some disappointment. But you have community members, business owners, even the GDBA is in support of this. And again, when we look at, again, I'm going off of the CEQA report, you know, and the comment made earlier, that it's not part of the general plan, goes back to my comments earlier, it wasn't included, but doesn't mean it can't be included. But what I'm trying to say is that we have people here who are struggling, business owners, saying, let's do something to generate. I've never seen a sign, or I've never said, I'm not going to go San Clara because I have a billboard on the side, on the freeway. I've never detoured to not go see a sign. I'm looking at it as it's a way to generate people to our, to our community, to our downtown, because we've got businesses who are struggling. And if this is a way to generate more business, more tax revenue, even if it's 1%, if the numbers are accurate, looking at $500,000 that we didn't have before, that we can use for whatever it may be. So again, I respect your comments, but I also want to look at it this way. You have folks here tonight speaking in favor of it, just as you had folks who are opposed to it. I think that we need to really base our decisions off the data that was provided.
Thank you. Councilmember Armandares?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I agree, the data that's provided is important. This has been a really hard balance to strike, given support from some of our small businesses and our car dealers that are, you know, so important to our economy, and for us being able to provide the services that we do for our community. But also, we are here to represent the voice of those who aren't here. We're also here to speak for the environment, for our wildlife, for the overall character of our community. So CEQA is important, and all those different aspects of the study. But also, in speaking to folks in the community, their concern was largely with what this says about our community, how it looks, you know, the optics of it, the, how is it going to change the overall character, and what folks think about Gilroy, driving through, or commuting, or even residents. And so this has been just a tremendously difficult decision for me. And I appreciate your comments, Mayor, on what our business community, you know, thinks, and how they've presented their opinions on that. But, you know, it's not, these billboards aren't something that I can, I can support at this time.
Okay, Councilmember Bracco?
Yes. Driving down the freeway in Gilroy, you notice hundreds of tents and tarps is what our view is now. So I don't see that this billboard would take away from our natural view that we have now. And some of the stuff that's been brought up, you know, the light causing cancer and stuff, this is LED light right here. People look at it all day long. They don't seem to have a problem with it. I have friends in Sacramento, Fremont, Oakland, in the towing industry, and I asked them if they've had any problems with the signs, and they said no. And I've talked, I've had a couple of dealers say, improve their business. So, you know, even if it's an advertisement for a dealership somewhere else, they're going to see our dealerships right there. The light will bring attention to them. So I agree with this, and I'm ready to support it. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Klein, yes, go ahead.
Now, for me, we hear about stories, and every town has a story. I know this community has been through a lot in these last four years, since 2019. The challenges that we've had have been hard, and it's been very difficult. The one thing that I've sensed in my time, both in my time with the festival, and just sensing our community, and moving through the process of getting to this dais, it led me through a process of really seeing our community. And this community has such a big heart, the people that live here, people that work, our business owners, people that work here, raising their families. It's commendable. You who come out here tonight, sharing your passion, sharing about your love for Gilroy. Gilroy is an incredible place to live. And for me, I look at the issues here, and I'm challenged by it, because I also tap into what people's thoughts are about it. And honestly, end of the day, I am a business owner. I do support businesses here in a lot of ways. I just have a really tough time with this because of, just, it's something that's not really us, in the sense of what that looks like. And from what I've seen and what I hear from the people that I trust, it's not something they want to see either. So for me, it's, I just have really, I'm like the mayor, I'm struggling through some of this stuff. And I'm trying to figure out the best way to go. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. So let's take that motion first, and then if there's still more discussion, that's fine. But the motion is to adopt a resolution adopting the final initial study mitigated negative declaration, and based on its independent analysis and substantial evidence in the record, find that the final ISMND was completed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. There is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment due to mitigations agreed to by the applicant, and the final ISMND reflects the city's independent judgment and analysis. Okay, that's the motion.
Mayor, sorry. If I may, I just want to make sure we're clear. This is not us making the decision for or against.
Correct, that's next.
Yeah, I just want to make, yeah.
This is just to adopt the CEQA, I mean, adopt the CEQA documents.
Councilmember Armandares?
No.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
No.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, so that passed five to two, I think?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, five to two. Okay, so then that brings us now to the next section. So it's still open for comment, if any councilmembers still want to speak. Otherwise, a motion of either A or B on the agenda.
Well, Mayor, just respectfully, given Councilmember Klein's comments, I mean, maybe could we have more discussion that sort of helps you make the decision? Because you, I know you said you're kind of torn by this. Is there additional information? Either way, I mean, again, I'm not leaning either way. I'm just saying, what else do you need from whomever it is to help you make the decision?
No, I'm just saying, in working through, like what Councilmember Armandares said, it's a tough decision, because it affects so many, so, in that sense.
No, I respect that.
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Okay, go ahead.
I appreciate the passion that, you know, the people brought here tonight, and all the letters that we received and the emails. But I agree with Councilmember Bracco. You know, when you're driving down the freeway, everyone's worried about losing that small-town charm. But this is the freeway, and what they see with the encampments is not small, is not charming. And I wish all of the people here who believe in the environment and the animals would take that passion and fight for our creeks that are being so destroyed by the campers that are there, with the feces, the chemicals, the cars that are being towed out of them, the needles. That's all going right down, right to the ocean. I don't understand how some people can be so passionate for the birds by this electronic sign, when they're forgetting about the animals that live, and the fish that live by these creeks and waterways that are being so polluted. That's my thought.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares?
Yeah, I don't see anyone here who forgets about those folks in the name of fighting for this. Councilmember Marks respectfully say, no folks who are here speaking for the environment, who are also very much humanitarians and care about the people who are forced to live by the creeks and in the streets, and want them to live in a more humane way. And on that note, I remember, Councilmember Tovar mentioned the data, but the data that I was referring to is the data that we received from the scientists, you know, the folks who are degreed and credentialed and study, you know, illumination and its impacts on our night sky, and on us as human beings, and on animal life. That's the data that I think is really important, also that we have to note and balance out, besides looking at potential revenue or speculated, you know, increase to business. And so that's why I'm, you know, it's not some, I can't support these billboards tonight.
Okay, and Councilmember Bracco?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion to adopt draft ordinance Z18Z report. Is that what you need?
Okay, you're making a motion to deny the appeal and uphold, no, to uphold the appeal and read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance. That one?
For clarification, if I may, Councilmember Bracco, the motion would be to uphold the appeal. If the council wishes to uphold the appeal, then you'd be introducing the ordinance tonight. And the normal motion then to introduce the ordinance is B on the agenda, which is a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading. And you'd be upholding the appeal, in other words, in favor of introducing the ordinance, if that's your motion.
So be in favor of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I know. I, too, I've struggled with this. I'm like, this wording is not right. But, okay, so Councilmember Bracco just made a motion to basically approve the sign, okay? And has it been seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, so it's seconded by Councilmember Tovar.
I have a discussion.
I do, too. So, okay, go ahead.
You can go.
Okay, well, no, go ahead, if you're going to read something.
No, I just want to say that, you know, I'm disappointed in the business community. You know what? I mean, this opposition has been around since last August. That's when the public comment period started. Just like in the planning commission, the ones I know for business, Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Business Association, visit Gilroy. Not any of them showed up tonight. They didn't show up at the planning commission meetings. They didn't write in public comment letters. None of them, silence. They just started trickling in maybe a little bit over the last few days. I think that's too reactionary. You know, if this gets denied tonight, and you have a year to go back, do better on your, you know, on showing us and proving us that this is worth it, and that you have the entire business community surrounding you. That's my message back.
Okay. I just wanted to say that it's not really that, but that, to me, there is not, there just isn't enough business support showing to establish a likelihood that Gilroy businesses will fill the sign even 51% of the time. That's really where I am, and that's what I would have liked to have seen be the horse in front of the cart instead of the other way around. I feel like we're being asked to approve something that, for me, has not been established with a likelihood of that sign being filled with advertisements for businesses that bring money to the city of Gilroy. So I don't think I could be any clearer than that. That is my position on this at this time. Okay, so there is a motion now, so we are, I guess, ready for a vote, or?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Armandares?
Nope.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
No.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
No. So that fails on four to three, correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
City Attorney, do I need to read the entire ordinance?
No, the motion failed. So now the floor is open for a new motion, if you wish to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's decision to deny the zoning amendment.
So moved.
I'll second.
What's, I'm sorry, what is the purpose of this?
It's a motion on number A to deny the appeal and draw, to have a, take a final action tonight. You have to take an action tonight, either upholding or denying the appeal. The motion to uphold the appeal and go forward with the ordinance just failed. So the appropriate motion now would be what's A on the agenda, which is the motion to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's decision.
Okay, so we have, I'm sorry, the motion was made by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Hilton. Okay, roll Okay, roll call, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Tovar?
No.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. And that passes four to three. Okay.
And that's the final action on this item, then.
So that brings us to unfinished business. There is none. It's actually at 7:50. Would you like to take a break?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. City Clerk would like a break, so let's reconvene at 8:00 AM, 8:00 PM, 8:00 AM, 8:00 PM, 10 minutes.
I know, that'd be nice.
Okay, can we all reconvene and start with Agenda Item 12.1, which is the 2002 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Update with Sharon Goey.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. So tonight, we have our 2022 Annual Progress Report on the General Plan and Housing Element before you. The government code requires every city to prepare an annual progress report to address two main topics. A summary of the calendar year activities that shows progress towards implementation of a jurisdiction's general plan. And then the other part is progress in meeting the jurisdiction's share of regional housing needs and efforts showing that we're removing constraints to improve the development of housing. And the annual progress report has to be submitted to two state agencies, that's the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and you have to do this by April 1st every year. And here are some notable activities that we did in 2022. For the general, sorry, for the zoning ordinance, and you've heard about this throughout 2022, we've been reviewing, editing, sorry, it disappeared from my screen here. Reviewing, editing, and refining the consultant's drafts in collaboration with the city attorney, and we anticipate bringing that to you this fall. Regarding the vacant and unutilized sites, the most recent residential vacant land inventory was updated in October 2022. And just between last year and this year, as part of our housing element update efforts, we've also been reviewing and inventory underutilized sites as potential opportunity for affordable housing development. Regarding impact fees, last year, the city conducted a comprehensive fee schedule update, and this included the Public Works Department updating impact fees. Regarding offering educational opportunities to youth, in 2022, 35 youth participated in the youth police academy. And last year, the city also developed an MOU between the Gilroy Unified School District and the Police Department to assign two officers to the school resource officer program. In efforts to maximize bicycle separation, last year, the city upgraded the existing Class II bike lanes on Rancho Hills Drive. There was also a variety of projects that are in the works while not completed in calendar year 2022. The citywide paving project is installing bike improvements, you know, at various locations in various stages. Last year, the city also included translation and interpretation services at several in-person and virtual community meetings, and these included the housing element outreach meetings. The Police Department also held a Spanish-language community police academy. Opportunities were also provided for residents to communicate and engage with city officials and city staff throughout the calendar year. Examples include the mayor's spotlight in the city's newsletter, which highlighted the city's various activities. And the mayor also holds monthly conversation and coffee with the mayor. The city also has several virtual town hall meetings, fentanyl and user fee study. Community events were also held, an example is the National Night Out. I don't know, everything keeps disappearing from. And then, last but not least, we maintain a list of meeting facilities that's been updated and posted on the city's website. So as I mentioned earlier, another section of the annual progress report is a summary of the city's progress toward our RINA goals. So RINA production is measured by building permits issued. So this table summarizes the number of permits for which building permits were issued to demonstrate the progress in meeting our share of housing needs. As you can see, our total number, this current cycle, is 1,080 units up until end of last year, and the city has exceeded our RINA goals for low-income category and above moderate-income category, which is the market-rate housing. We still have a little bit of allocation for the extremely low, very low-income category and moderate-income category. However, these remaining units really shouldn't detract from the fact that Gilroy has permitted, you know, for example, if you look at the low-income category, 785 units, that's almost five times the allocation. And here, we have gathered some data of the cities in Santa Clara County that have reported out their RINA progress. Why does it keep disappearing? And as you can see, all the cities have produced a lot of above-moderate or market-rate housing, and most cities have not produced much affordable housing, and they have low numbers in the lower-income categories. And overall, Gilroy has had a pretty remarkable housing production in all income categories. And here's staff recommendation is for council to accept the 2022 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report and direct staff to transmit the report submitted to HCD and OPR. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sharon. Okay, council members, are there any questions? Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about SB 35 and if we're still going to be subject to SB 35 since we didn't meet our very low-income RINA requirements?
Yes, I know after the reports are all submitted to, you know, from all jurisdictions, submitted to HCD, generally around July, they will come out with a list. I know there's two different areas of the list, so we might still be on that for one of them, but as part of our department's work plan, we're working on this checklist, you know, if SB projects come through.
Thank you.
Any other questions? None? Okay, well, this is a accept the report and direct staff to submit the 2022 Annual Progress Report to HUD.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Would you mind opening public comment?
Oh, sorry.
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Everybody's gone, it's like, not everybody, sorry. Okay. Okay. Public comment open, public comment closed. So is there a, it's not a motion, it's a direction, yeah. So is everybody, is it a motion?
No.
Right. We're all directing, okay. Okay, good to go. Thank you, Sharon. Okay, 12.2, unhoused camping ban near schools and critical infrastructure, even though we just learned in the report we're not using the term camping, but, okay, that's the title of the, of the agenda item. So Bryce is going to give us this report.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Let me just get this started here. So as the mayor read into the record, this is an item that staff is asking for council feedback and direction regarding a potential unhoused camping ban. We're using that term just as a kind of replacement for this time, near schools and critical infrastructure. And I'll talk about why camping is not, is a term that we're proposing not to include. So a little bit of background, previous reports presented to council include July 5th. At that point, staff came to you with a report on the Boise case, which is probably the largest impact on how cities address the issue of unhoused camping, camping in public property, and the challenges to city ordinances that are prohibiting camping or sleeping in public areas. September 12th of 2022, staff returned to council discussing other cities crafting ordinances after the Boise decision, specifically looking at the Los Angeles ordinance. We also identified the Supreme Court's elaboration on the decision, it's up on the screen here. We're mentioning that even where shelter is unavailable and ordinance prohibiting sitting, lying, or sleeping outside in particular locations might well be constitutionally permissible. And that's an excerpt from a much broader discussion that the Supreme Court had in that decision. So the current policy is for, that council authorized the Gilroy Police Department to enforce no camping ordinances on public property for met two conditions. One is that it offers space as shelter beforehand, and the second is that that shelter offers a connection to the individual, to resources that could accommodate their needs pursuant to Americans with Disabilities Act 88. It also authorized clean, clearing encampments in public places in compliance with Gilroy PD policy, specifically 411, which governs safeguards as far as the handling of their personal property, proper posting, et cetera. So the September 12th meeting, the council did issue direction to bring back key points for potential ordinance that would prohibit unhoused camping in certain locations. Listed were within 500 feet of schools, parks, daycares, playgrounds, and other locations where children are expected, in areas of critical infrastructure, and locations that would restrict access to public safety or public infrastructure locations. So the specific final language and how we interact with the other city code section of policy is going to vary. So this is, these are draft key points. We are still undergoing analysis, and that will continue even after we get the direction from council this evening. Staff is seeking this input to help with the completion of our analysis and bring back a draft ordinance for council introduction. This includes mapping of the locations to make sure that the areas that are banned are not, to the degree where it would trigger another challenge to the ordinance. The draft policy terms are based on council's direction, but we augmented a little bit with LA ordinance for some minor components that were not included in the direction from council. And then legal review and the final analysis may require further modifications it would bring during that, during that introduction item. So the key policy points is that no person shall obstruct by sitting, lying, or sleeping, or by storing, using, maintaining, or placing personal property on the street, sidewalk, other property, or, sorry, or other public right-of-way if it meets seven conditions. If it, one is if it impedes passage as provided by Americans with Disabilities Act, if it's within 500 feet of any school, daycare facility, park, or playground. We did not include the language about where locations where children are expected. In reviewing this from a legal perspective, it's too broad, I believe it's too broad to be, to survive a legal challenge. Third is within 100 feet of critical infrastructure. This includes water resources such as wells, pumps, tanks, lifts, stations, and storm drains, also health and safety resources, so police, fire, and ambulance stations, hospitals, and medical clinics. And finally, certain transportation infrastructure, namely railways, bridges, overs and over-and-underpasses. The fourth location would be within 10 feet of any utilizable building entrance, exit, driveway, or loading dock. Fifth would be within five feet of any fire hydrant, fire plug, or other fire department connections. Six would be obstructing any activity for which the city has issued a permit. And then finally, obstructing any street or other right-of-way open to use by motor vehicles, including any portion marked as a bike lane. The violation of the policy will be subject to penalties set forth in the Gilroy City Code, and these are continuing to be reviewed also legally, and will have the final violations provision listed in detail in the proposed ordinance that would come back to council. The next steps, so one is addressing the camp or camping term. This has been a source of litigation and has repeatedly been deemed those terms too broad or not defined well enough to be upheld by courts. That's the reason we are including the lengthier physical description of sitting, lying, and sleeping. This, again, is going to continue analysis as we move forward towards a final introducible ordinance. And then the development on this ordinance is going to continue. We received the direction tonight, map locations of the prohibition areas. We'll be analyzing also interactions with other city code sections and Gilroy policies. And then legal review will continue, it will be the next final stage, and all those may require further modifications, but the ordinance will be introduced at a later council meeting. So staff's recommendation is for council to write any direction about the proposed policy terms that we can then take back into our final analysis. With that, that completes the presentation. Happy to discuss any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, council, that was, that was a good report, Bryce. Thank you very much for doing that. And just so we're all clear, what we're looking for is just a direction, because this has not been mapped out yet. Based on our direction tonight, staff will then come back with this, the areas mapped out, so we can actually see where are the areas that would be prohibited and where does that leave the rest of the city? How does it map out? So I have one question, since I'm speaking, I'll just go ahead and ask my question and then leave it to the council. And that is, the only thing of these seven that is not on here is creeks. And for my own, I know you put in here, you pointed that out to me today when I asked, but there is a part in our report on page 944 of the packet, page 2 of 5, where you say research would be needed concerning the possibility of prohibiting sleeping, lying, okay, in or around creeks. Is that such a significant research project that you left it out, or is that something we could put in?
If I may, that's really on me. I took it out because of some legal uncertainty. I think we, if the council desires, we will look at it again, and it may be, it may be that we'll be able to put it back in. It also depends on what creeks the city owns or what waterway the city owns versus privately-owned or owned by the water district. We want to take a look at that as well, so.
But the only thing we can have an ordinance for is what's city-owned, right? We can't legislate what's not city-owned, can we?
Well, we're, yes, we can legislate, for example, that you can't camp on private property without a permit or something. We can do that. On the other hand, because of the interaction with the water district and the fact that we have been in litigation over the Public Records Act over a sweep that occurred in 2018 on water district property where we were providing security, I took it out of this draft, but if the council desires, we'll look at it again and see if we can put it back in, and what the ramifications would be.
Well, I just don't want to be going through this, you know, this is like our third effort at trying to get a handle on what we can do. And so I'm asking if creeks ought to be included in this or not, even though, I mean, the only creek that this might apply to that is city-owned is the one by the Long House.
No, no, Utes.
Is city-owned? I personally would like to see it explored a bit more. No, Jimmy's, okay. What?
We'll identify all the creeks.
Okay.
I think we need to do that identification and then do the analysis.
Okay, let's do that.
We can certainly do that if the council desires.
So then, my suggestion would be that we direct staff all seven of these, but then to also include what creeks would the city be able to include any kind of enforcement on?
Okay.
Even if it's just to identify what they are, not how do we do it?
Okay.
Yeah. That'd be, okay, that's my suggestion. Any other comment?
Andy, can you, so given that a number of our folks who are unhoused are Americans with disabilities, was I taking into consideration when we're talking about not allowing them to sit or lie or place their objects on public property like parks or streets or sidewalks?
There's always a medical defense to any kind of enforcement of something like this. For example, if someone sits on the sidewalk and says, I feel faint, I have to sit down, or.
Or, but I just want to sit in the park or lie down and take a nap in the park.
We're not, we don't have a, we're not preventing people from sitting or lying in parks. There is no prohibition against someone sitting down in a park. But, you know, you raise a good point.
I'm just saying the park is included.
You raise a good point about all of these ordinances, though, and that's why they're tricky, because many activities, and that's one reason we did not put a definition of camping in, because many of the activities that look like camping might be just someone taking a nap, for example. And when does it become camping? It becomes subjectively camping when it's a substitute for an accommodation rather than just someone doing a short sojourn of some sort. So these things are, the definitions are very tricky, but I think that, to answer your question, that I think anybody with a disability that needs to be reasonably accommodated would have to be accommodated, I would believe.
And how do we write that into a policy?
It's difficult to write into a policy. I'm not sure we have to write it into a policy, because I think it goes with any of our normal enforcement of laws.
So we have to wait for it to be violated and then litigated? What do we do about that?
Well, the Americans with Disabilities Act is written into the policy already in the sense that that's the free passage that is required, so.
But I'm thinking, are we expecting our officers to be, have facility of that language and how it applies? and how it applies, and who it applies to, and how to define disability?
Well, I guess, I guess the question is what disabilities would cause this policy to be violated? I mean, some, the staff could look at that if desired.
There's disabilities that aren't physically detectable, right? Where someone would need to sit or lie down sometimes in a park if they don't have shelter, right? Or they're not physically.
Well, this ordinance does not prevent people from sitting or lying down in a park.
It says that, though.
No.
How does it not?
It says that.
Maybe I'm missing that.
Where are you, where are you reading?
Right, no person shall sit, lie, sleep, number two, in a park.
Daycare facility, park, or playground.
This, that's, yeah, I'm sorry, you, you, we're park and play. This is, this is the, in relation to children, and this applies, this really applies to what we are essentially saying are camping.
Well, we don't have any parks that are only dedicated to children. We have playgrounds, right? Without age restrictions.
Mm-hmm.
But we also, parks are not restricted to children.
Okay, so what? This is, yes, this is, I think, if I could figure, so this is one of those areas we're talking about having the additional legal review as far as language, because it intends to prevent overnight sleeping, laying.
That's why I brought it up.
That's okay, yes. No, it's great, great point.
I think we'll all agree with that. I think we'll, we'll all agree that what, what we want to come back is something that is clearly not preventing people from just sitting or taking a nap in the park. Okay? That's not what this is getting at at all.
You're correct, you're right, right.
Okay.
So thank you Zach for validating that for me.
No, I, I agree with you, because the focus of our thinking had really been on the schools and daycares.
Right.
And we already have no camping ordinance in the park, so I think we will not be saying that you can't sit or lie in a park.
I mean, I just, I can't not say that this feels so inhumane and unrealistic in general, you know, is how we're treating the, the forest among us, and again, folks who are physically disabled and suffer from other types of disabilities that aren't physically protectable, trying to keep them away from police and fire stations, ambulance stations, hospitals, medical clinics, you know, a number of our folks live under bridges and under overpasses and aren't causing harm to them, are just trying to live and seek shelter, so I'm not sure, I, I won't be able to see tonight if we, if we keep that language.
Okay. Point taken. Any other council members with comments? Otherwise, we just need time.
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is going to be, this is going to be extremely hard, and I'm not surprised that this has taken us three times. I don't think we're actually going to be able to get through this ordinance. I'm not going to take a guess. I, I think, I don't think we're going to be able to get it there, but I understand the purpose. I just think we're there, we're there a little too early. I don't think we have enough places for, for people to, to go, and not only do we have to circle the 500 feet around this type of infrastructure, but we also have to provide a place where they can go and camp, or go to a shelter, and, or have permanent, you know, housing within Gilroy, and I don't think we're, I don't think we're quite there yet. So those are my only comments.
Do you have a question?
Another quest, okay. Does anyone else want to speak first? Because.
I would like to say something also.
Okay. Councilmember Tovar, councilmember Marks, and then we'll go back to councilmember Armadale.
And so, again, so what we're, the end goal here is sort of give direction on what we want to see come back.
Yes, staff, right, staff has laid out the seven. I suggested looking at creeks in there, and as far as what the language would be, that has to come back, and the mapping of it has to come back.
Yeah, now, obviously, the creek's important, but I want to go back to councilmember Armadale's comments. I think it's very crucial that we sort of, if, if it's massaging this language, include what she's sort of pointing out to us, because reading this here, I, I could not, you know, give a thumbs up for this one here in the language, so if, if we're going to decide, okay, let's try to bring this back, you know, maybe include the different language, then obviously I'd be in support of it, but the way it's written right now, I, I can't, me personally, I can't, I can't approve this here.
Yeah, this is coming about because, as you know, we've had overwhelming public outcry that we do something, so we're trying to see what we can do. Okay, councilmember Marks.
Well, I think maybe the council needs to remember why this all came about.
Yeah.
You know, why were parents concerned? What were they addressing? It wasn't someone going to a park and sitting, or lying, or, you know, just being there. It was the drug use, it was exposure, it was alcoholism, sometimes, you know, it, the parents felt that it was a real, sometimes it was a threatening environment. You know, we still have the woman that supposedly pulled out a gun and pointed it at a window in a car at a parent who was at the Gilroy Prep School. So maybe we need to start thinking of how we word it to address those issues, and so it's not a blanket, but it narrows it down.
And just to your point, it's also the things that we, when we've had to go and clean out areas, the damage that has been discovered to critical infrastructure that supports bridges, that people are driving over and walking over. This, this, yeah, that, that is what we're trying to address here, so let's keep that in mind. I mean, if this moves forward with direction, at least my direction is that those are the things this is trying to address, and not the people who are just using our parks to enjoy the sunshine.
Yeah, and, and I can understand that part, you know, to that narrow focus, because this policy by no means is a homeless prevention policy or goes towards anything on reducing homelessness. So this is purely, if we do this purely on safety, infrastructure.
That's what this is.
Like, focus it on that, I'm all for it. I get that scope. This scope is, is too big.
That would be the original intention of it.
That was, and I believe that this scope is too big.
Okay, I'm going to disagree with you, because I think this scope is exactly what we asked staff to come back with. Whether it's worded properly is a different story.
Yeah, that's the scope.
Well, the, but this, but this wording isn't the final wording. This is just for us to give direction. I wouldn't expect staff and our city attorney to incur that kind of expense before knowing what our direction is. So I'm glad, thank you for bringing it back in this form before spending that kind of money on perfecting the language. Okay, thank you. With councilmember Armadale's, and then councilmember Bracco.
Something I'd like to see in there is some conditions, right? If folks are going to be prohibited from this whole, like, all these public services and public spaces are cited, asked to move, swept out of here, and we say that, there was language in here about being, after they've been referred to a shelter or given information about a shelter, I just, I think we need more robust language that says if there is, they're referred to a shelter where there is space, because we can always refer them to a shelter, we could also refer them to a mansion, you know, that doesn't mean that it's realistic. I think that if they're provided with resources or actual transportation to that shelter and their space, and if we're not at a time where we're experiencing inclement weather where these folks will be exposed to, to elements, right, that will put them in danger or compromise their health. I'd like to do something like that to, to balance this out.
If I may point out, that, that would be in addition to this, because this ordinance would apply regardless of whether there is shelter space available. In other words, this ordinance says you can't camp or you can't, or do certain things in certain parts of the city, although you can in other parts, regardless of whether there are shelters. If the council wants to include a shelter requirement, that would be your direction, but.
That wouldn't trigger something like Boise?
No, I think the, it's, this is really complicated, as we know. We've talked about it many times. Boise initially came out in 2019, the Boise case, and had some very strong language about how cities can't prohibit camping on public spaces unless there is enough shelter impliedly for everybody, every homeless person. That's kind of how it was taken. And the initial reaction to Boise on all cities, including Gilroy, was to essentially stop prohibitions on camping and let, let it, let it go. We came to you in July with further analysis, because there had been a number of court cases since Boise that seemed to say, based on some language in Boise and in later cases, that it was okay, and remember, at the time, there was one particular park and a few people were camping, and the question was, could, did you, could the city provide shelter for those few people? Because if we could, then our analysis was, the city could say to those people, you must not camp in this park, there is shelter space available to you, and that will be legal. In September, we came to you again because cities were now going further, particularly the Los Angeles ordinance that we referred to, which further took up language in some cases that basically said, there's, Boise does not mean that you can't prohibit camping certain places, or certain activities that are like camping in certain parts of the city. You can't prohibit it in the whole city. And that's where we analogize it to First Amendment cases, where you could say, for example, that adult bookstores cannot be within 1,000 feet of a school, but you have to draw a map that shows they can be someplace. You can't outlaw your whole city that way by those kind of restrictions. And so that's when we came back to you in September with the approach to produce an ordinance, something like this, which is modeled after the Los Angeles ordinance, that would allow, would have specific prohibitions on certain kinds of activity in places where people can hang out and camp, that would be legal, assuming there are other places in the city where they can camp.
So the, the, that's the stuff you're bringing back to show where they can.
The mapping.
That will have to be brought back once we have these distance parameters and places known.
Exactly.
Exactly, that's correct.
Which doesn't mean that anything's being sanctioned, it just means that these safety issues are not blanketing the entire city.
Right.
But that's, that's what this means.
Right.
So, okay, so councilmember Bracco, that's right.
I, I would like to see it simplified. This all started over the Gilroy Prep School, and now we're talking about wells, pumps, tanks, places we've never had a problem. I mean, I, I haven't heard of anybody going and camping on the lawn at a police station. Have you? Or a fire station, or, or any of these places? So it's like we're getting paid by the word, and we just make it real big. I, I would like to see it simplified, so it's easy to understand, so, so the homeless population understand it, where they can be and where they can't be.
Okay. Okay, so trying to bring this back, I don't know, Jimmy, if you have anything to say, please say it, but otherwise, I, I, I think the direction to staff ought to be, the, how they're, how they've gone in this report, one through, just add an eight to look at creeks, they're going to come back and map it, and of course, the wording is yet to be, that's what we're going to be voting on the next time. This, this here is not about the wording. This here is about the, yeah, the direction for the, the, the points.
Which are made from the words.
The, the, the words that are here in, in the staff report.
Yeah.
The words that are.
The wording is important, because.
No, no, the, the points that are in the staff report.
So you mean the locations?
The.
Is that what you're talking about? The points?
On one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, but adding in creeks, to look at creeks.
And are we removing parks?
No.
No.
That's the wording that they'll, they'll come back with to make sure that this doesn't apply to people trying to enjoy a sunny day in the park.
Or doing anything in the park that they have a right to do.
Or doing anything that.
Just remove the word park, stuff like that.
Okay.
I, I think we probably would end up removing the word park.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe so.
So just, just to get clarification, to make sure I'm mapping this correctly. So removing the park itself, but are we also removing?
Not the playgrounds.
Around the park?
How many?
Or is it just the park itself that's being removed?
500 feet around a playground is a lot.
The point, again, the point of this was to not be around children, to not have people be around children with needles or whatever else they might have.
So if I go to the playground, some of our playgrounds put some completely out of some of our parks. 500 feet is a lot.
But I think it's important to put in, because you would not want some of the people who are doing drugs or having issues.
And they know there are illegal activities that they shouldn't do in the park, right?
Right, right.
Well, shouldn't do anywhere.
Yeah.
Well, there is, but it's not being enforced.
If you're 500 feet from the playground at Miller, you're out of the park.
Right.
And they still have a right to be at the park.
Unless they're doing drugs or alcohol, or going crazy.
Anybody, anybody, nobody could do that.
Okay, so when, when the city comes back with the mapping, maybe you'll, we'll, we'll see all this in the mapping, okay, guys? So this can be discussed when we see the mapping of how this actually works out, okay?
So I'm providing this, my, my feedback to help guide them towards what I want, right? If that's what we agree on, that's what.
Yeah, and I can't, given it, right.
Well, I, I think this is helpful, because this discussion is bringing out some of the ambiguities in trying to control this behavior.
Exactly, yes.
Which is very real.
Right. Okay, so have we given the appropriate direction then?
I think we understand what to bring back, Bryce. Do you agree?
Right. That where there's going to be, there'll be robust discussion over how it's exactly worded and what the mapping looks like. We understand that. Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I compass.
Okay, city administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just have a few quick updates of what I want to thank the Public Works crews who removed over the course of the last week about 50 trees that were down.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We, they are out there before, during, and after, and I couldn't be more proud to be part of a team like that, that really heads off those problems before we, we encountered them. One thing I wanted to note in tonight's meeting, I'm really disappointed that we weren't able to hear the two people who are speaking Spanish, because we have everything that they need to do that. So we're, I'm going to work with city clerk for the next meeting or so, where somebody can denote on their card that they need translation, but that's why we have Wordley, and if I'd had just 15 seconds, I could have pulled it up on my computer.
Yeah, I couldn't pull it up quick enough.
But we'll get better at this, and hopefully they'll know next time that they could just spark it on the card, and whatever language they speak, we can translate, like 120 of them.
Can we make an announcement?
Well, we, we have the QR code up there, and it's in Spanish, but I just don't think, yeah, maybe we should make it an announcement, but we'll get a better process in place, so that way they walk in, they know they could, they could be heard. So we have it, we're, still haven't quite figured out how to use it yet, but we'll get there. I do wanted to let the public know that we have had significant issues over at La Sonoma's Park, and so we have closed two parking lots over at Wayland Lane and Hannah Street that are, the, at different ends of Arnold Drive, violence, all those illegal tech activities you're talking about. You can still walk through that area, but for now, until we can get things to calm down a little bit, we have closed the parking lots, but we'll, we're working on some.
Just the back parking lot?
Yes, you can still access the park on Church and Antelli, it's a pretty good-sized lot, but for now, we have them temporarily closed, so if you hear anything about that, we, they will be reopened, but we just aren't quite sure yet.
They're closing all the.
Just the cars?
Yes, yes, for now.
Cars?
Just the cars. The next part I wanted to tell you, we actually got an update from PG&E that they will be out to finish the work. Our consultant will be out to finish the work on a city hall generator. We've lost power twice, and it was one of those situations where you tell yourself it sure would be nice to have a generator, and so we should have this done in the next week. The fire station itself is not progressing at all, and in fact, I believe it's going to get more and more delayed, so we will be coming to council here shortly to talk about some options we're looking at.
Because of PG&E.
Because of PG&E.
Yeah.
Because we are about to have a modular building built, but we have nowhere to put it to have it connected to electricity, so we'll return at some point to talk to council about that. The last thing I wanted to mention is that you see on your screen all night and through some of our social media, you can help fight dirty, love Gilroy. And we did a campaign with our staff about what our slogan should be, or what our mantra should be during our, our efforts to clean up the litter and such, and there were so many good ones that we couldn't get rid of them, so this is one of the first ones we're asking people to fight dirty against trash, and, and everything will have a love Gilroy. So our actual motto was love Gilroy, and so this gentleman here is being a great citizen, And so this gentleman here is being a great citizen, picking up some trash. But now you all have the opportunity to start with our kickoff, which is this Saturday, March 25th at nine o'clock. And Bryce has organized a community cleanup day. You meet next to the art center in the grassy area. We have grabnabbers, bags, buckets, you name it, and we're organizing activity to just do some cleanup during downtown.